Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 25th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. I am Dennis Keefe, the Clerk of the Select Board. I will be chairing tonight's meeting as both Leah Gibson, our Chair, and Stephanie McGowan, our Vice Chair, weigh with conflicts. But don't worry, I have both Mark Elfman to my right and Seth Ferguson to my left. And we have a quorum, and we'll be all right, and we'll have a good meeting. So just a reminder that this meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Fort Worth Cable Access. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to Citizens' input, I also want to acknowledge that this is the second meeting for our new, second official meeting of the Select Board for our new town.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, John.
Thank you.
You want to say anything at the outset?
Nope, just pleased to be here. And, you know, it's just been a great, it's been a great experience so far, and I'll touch on that a little bit later in the agenda.
Great, good, thank you. Okay, Citizens' input, we have someone here to present to us. So why don't you get right into it? Introduce yourself and where you're from.
Thank you, thank you, Dennis. I'm Jack Martin, Summer Street. And also welcome, John. About a month ago, I got a, I was contacted by the Town Manager's Office and asked to be on to discuss Article 9 tonight. And for some reason, that got dropped from the agenda. And it doesn't matter why, it is, that's the fact. So I came here on Citizens' input to give a brief summary of Article 9 and what's driving it. And, you know, we have to start from basic facts. Roads are public right of ways. Pedestrians, bikers, motorists, all have an equal right to use a road. You know, you stop and think about that, and you say, hmm, that's maybe not obvious because we spend all our money on the roads, not on the bike paths, which we have none, or the sidewalks. And so, in practice, pedestrians risk their lives on many of our main roads. So last 20 years, there's been almost no investment in our sidewalks, either construction or even maintenance. So Article 9 is intended to give the voters at town meeting a chance to remind town officials that sidewalks are and should be an important part of our annual capital plan. So you say, it should be. And as a matter of fact, it's in writing. Because we have, the town has a financial policies document. And that town, and that financial, and you guys have read it, I'm sure. And among other things, it says there should be a minimum of $1 million a year to go into our pavement management. And pavement management is roads and sidewalks. And, well, essentially, that's all it is in this town. And it continues on, the money, that $1 million, should come from meals tax, Chapter 90, and free cash. Well, we get about $1 million a year for meals tax. We get about $650,000 from Chapter 90. And so you're saying, well, I guess there's money there. However, that turns out not to be the case. Chapter 90, our Article 9 suggests, is, says that the town will allocate 40% of its Chapter 90 money towards sidewalks in the coming years. Now, that turns out, out of $1 million, that's about a quarter of the size of the total pavement budget. So that's a significant sum, but not a massive sum. And just to be clear, the state is, notes that sidewalks, as well as roads, are part of Chapter 90. So this is not a diversion of funds. This is part of what the state intends us to use the money for. When I started circulating this petition that led to Article 9, this was last December, I was surprised. You know, I learned a few things. I was surprised at how people were interested in sidewalks for the main roads of town in areas that don't have sidewalks. And it turns out, there's quite a few of them. And so it's, and that's why the article is written, to be reconstruction of sidewalks and construction of new sidewalks. Now, we have on the books a complete streets plan from 2019. And that plan says that in order to bring our sidewalks up to spec, we should expect to spend $10 million. I don't know what $10 million it's, it was $10 million in 2019. I don't know what it would be today. But if you look a little closer, there's almost nothing in that plan. There's only a few spots where they're building new sidewalks. There's, it's almost entirely rebuilding existing sidewalks. So the gaps, for example, on South Street, where there is no sidewalk, Cochasset Street, East Street, Green Street, the list goes on, not on the 2019 plan. So what that tells you is that 2019 plan that said $10 million? No, if you're going to do the job right and do what the citizens want, you've got to spend at least $15 million. And that's a number picked out of the air. What I'm saying is it's considerably more than what the 2019 plan said. Obviously, we're not going to solve this tonight. But the intent of Article 19 is to start the process of building sidewalks and re, and repairing sidewalks and doing it without spending additional money. It reallocates money that's already in the budget. And as I said, it's, this is all being done for pedestrian safety. I ask each of you for your support.
Thank you.
So I don't know, I'm not sure that you can comment on what I said, but.
I said, "Thank you," though.
But it's, but it's the kind of thing that if you have feedback to me that, you know, I'm more than willing to talk to you about it offline.
Yes, and we will take it up at our next meeting, you know. And also, if anyone has any further input, they can send it to Christina Metcalf, you know, and she can, you know, make sure.
She was very helpful this afternoon, by the way.
Yes, yes, always is.
I was astonished. I looked at the agenda to see what time I was scheduled for, and I wasn't on the agenda. So I came down, I came down here, and, and the staff in the Town Manager's Office was very cooperative.
Great, thank you.
Jack, I would just say, without commenting on the article or whether I'm for or against it, I do love the engagement, and I think it's really important. The engagement that you're, you know, showing with bringing, coming in and talking to us about this and getting the community involved, because I think that's critically important to moving something like this forward. So I appreciate it.
I thank you. The reason I was concerned about this is you put an article on the warrant, and it's a one- or two-sentence article, nobody knows what it is. So if you, this is one of the few vehicles we have. This, because it's televised, this is one of the few vehicles we have to educate the community, plus or minus, and maybe even get a few more voters to come to town meeting.
Sure.
I don't know whether that would happen or not, but.
Great.
Yeah, great, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now we have the update on the Boydin Library.
Hi, everybody. My name's Libby O'Neill. I'm the Director of the Boydin Library. Thank you for having me at your meeting tonight to talk about and give a little recap of what we've been doing this past year. Thank you.
The side of the circle.
Oh, I see, all right. All right, so I just quickly put a fact sheet together for 2022. As you can see, we've been quite busy this past year. We've added over 7,000 new items to our collection. Our circulation, our numbers have gone up. I don't have past year to compare, but they're back up to pre-COVID numbers. Physical items, 127,632. And something to keep in mind is that the digital services, eBooks, audiobooks, video, is also up with 31,000, just over 31,000. We have new cardholders in 2022. We had 669. Just a couple other things to highlight on our fact sheet. We have 86,930 library visits. So that's about 200 to 300 people per day entering the Boydin Library. And also, in 2022, we had about 261 programs. So we've been very busy. I just thought I'd put it out there that, you know, libraries really are for everyone, and especially this week as we're celebrating National Library Week. Libraries really are the community center for everyone. It doesn't matter, doesn't matter age, it doesn't matter race, gender, religion, et cetera, anything, you know. We have something for everyone at the library, and we want to be a welcoming, safe place for everyone to come to the library. So some of the things I thought I would highlight available at the library. The latest fiction, nonfiction titles are added monthly to our adult, young adult, and children's collections. We have 63 magazines and newspaper subscriptions available for the public to come and read at the library. We have public computers, we have mobile printing services, free Wi-Fi. We have now a 3D printer that you can come print something that is legal, of course, to print. We have a local history collection. We have educational, new educational toys and activities in our children's room. We have a newly designed teen room that I'm, we're really excited about, which I'll show you on the next slide. And we also have a group tutoring room along with meeting space for nonprofit groups and town organizations. So our newly designed teen room, our, our new teen librarian had, came in with a vision to transform this, this, this room and have it be amazing for the teens in Foxborough. As you can see in the top left-hand corner, that's what the teen room used to be when I started a little over a year ago. It was just a room with maybe one or two tables. It was not very cheerful. It had a lot of books, but it wasn't being used at all. And now Jennifer has turned it into this cheerful, bright place, and she's kind of put it into segmented rooms. So as you can see with the TV there, it's sort of like the living room area. The kids love the beanbag chairs. We have an Xbox for the teens to play. We have, in the second picture there, we have the table to the, further towards the wall. She puts out monthly maker space, like crafting kind of activities for the teens to do. Another table, another table for kids to like study at, and a little quiet area with those really comfortable orange chairs. And then we just recently, on April 13th, thank you, John, for coming. Your first week, you made time to come to our ribbon cutting. And as you can see in the picture at the bottom over there, it's, the teens were able to do a ribbon cutting, which was really, really special. Some of the things that we've added this year, we have a library of things collection. So with your library card, you can come to the library to try an item before you buy it, or possibly you might just need something for, just to have it for a one-time thing, like maybe a party or something. You want like a yard game to check out and have. We have a pickleball set, we have a telescope. I listed just some of the things we have. We have a 3D doodle pen that kids can, anyone really, but kids really find it fun to use the doodle pen. We have a metal detector, we have a camping tent, and I'm also looking to expand this collection too this year, so. We just started a seed lending library in the beginning of April. I wouldn't have been able to kick this off without the help of my staff. I was able to put it all together. And we started this program where people can check out seeds. And we don't hold you to it if you can't return the seeds at the end of the growing season. But you can choose between sampling of herbs, vegetables, and flowers. And this is really to encourage people to form a love of gardening, to develop a network of seed savers, and to really just encourage the preservation of heirloom seeds. We had this program for a week, and we were already out of herbs and flowers. So it was very, very popular. We also have a lot of museum passes that you can also check out with your library card. This allows anyone to be able to have access, discounted admission to all of these area museums or like the Massachusetts State DCR pass to parks in the area. A lot of these passes are either sponsored by our Friends Group, or we recently got the donation from Lakeview Pavilion to sponsor a lot of these museum passes. And our newest one, I believe, that we've added recently was the Newport Art Museum. So one of the streaming services that's really, really popular, and it's so confusing because my name is Libby, and the app is also Libby, so.
It's all about you.
I guess so. But one of the largest collections that we have for eBooks and audiobooks, even magazines and videos, is Overdrive/Libby. And people can check out eBooks and audiobooks on their devices. And it's just another way to use the library with not even coming in to have to check out and then return items, so.
Excuse me, Libby.
Of course.
So you can download an audiobook onto your.
Libby app.
iPhone?
Yep, yep.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, and the nice thing about it is that you don't have to worry about bringing it back on time, because then it sort of just disappears from your app, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Some of the other online streaming services we have, Hoopla. One thing with Libby eBooks and audiobooks is that we only purchase certain licensing for a certain number of copies. So it's sort of the same thing as a physical book. If it's not available, you do have to place a hold for it. With Hoopla, though, this is also eBooks, audiobooks. It's actually musical CDs, movies, or TV shows. However, titles are always available. So that's kind of the nice thing. So I kind of go back and forth with doing Hoopla and Libby to see what I can get the fastest, but it's nice to have all those options. So as I said, no wait time. You can, if you find something, you check it out and start listening to it or reading it. And our patrons can get five items per month with their card. We also have Canopy, which is a video streaming platform. So think like independent films, documentaries. It's just another way to stream movies, independent movies. And we also have Creative Bug, which I think is really fun. I'm not much of an artist, but it has arts and crafts workshops and techniques that you can, you can do from home and learn how to paint, knit, crochet, et cetera. Here's a list of some of our electronic resources. Along with the statewide databases that we have access to with your library card, we also have a lot of electronic resources. And I won't list all of them here, but Ancestry Library Edition. You do have to come into the library to use it, but it's a genealogy database. The A to Z World Food is one of our newer databases. I actually use that with our Spice Club, which is also very popular. I put together each month a Spice, a Spice Club kit for people to register and pick up, and then they have to, and then I tie them back to recipes and spice information using this resource. Consumer Reports, we have Mango Languages. So if you want to learn a new language, you can use that. And then, let's see, I think, on here. I wanted to list some of our library services. We have enriching programs for patrons of all ages. We have reference assistance and one-on-one computer help. I think we may be the only, one of the only libraries in the area that still has a dedicated reference desk and reference librarian to always be there to assist the public. A lot of libraries are kind of phasing that out as reference questions aren't as common anymore. It's more the technology help is what really, is really needed. We have exam proctoring. We have home delivery services, which we partnered with the Council on Aging. We also partnered with the Council on Aging on create and remember kits. These are for people to check out. They kind of started as a memory kit, but I, I morphed it into anyone can check it out to basically work together to use the kits to share stories, build relationships, and have fun together. The gardening kit actually has like a little Zen garden thing that you can kind of play with, and has a puzzle, and books to read. Some of them have like coloring books. So really, like, maybe a grandparent and a child could like, you know, work together on that and have fun together. As of December, we, we started the Library Speakers Consortium, which we partnered with the Library Speakers Consortium. So that offers two to three virtual author talks a month, featuring pretty well-known authors on a variety of topics. When you ask the public what they really want at the library, they always say, "Author talks." But what they really want is like, you know, the very popular authors that, you know, we can't always afford to have two to three popular authors come into the library, you know, every month. So this is a great way that we partnered with other, with the Library Speakers Consortium to be able to offer that virtually. And if people miss the virtual live program, they can access the author talks on demand to go back and look at them. As I mentioned, we have the Spice Club for Adults, super popular. We have about 15 kits that we do each month. And it's been about, I would say, 15 people on the waitlist for it, just trying to, just trying to get it into it. And then we feature a local artist each month in our community room, too. Some programs that we've had, the Summer Reading Program, the Youth Services Team does an amazing job doing this for the families of Foxborough. Some of them we'd like to highlight here is the Police Storytime at Payson Playground, the Fire Storytime. We have the Teddy Bear Picnic, which is an annual favorite for families. And then we usually also have a band come and play at the Teddy Bear Picnic. And I believe that's Slide the Fox that also attended the picnic. We also, kids, you know, for reading and encouraging reading over the summer, they can earn prizes. So we have a child here that has earned some prizes for the minutes that he's read for, for the summer. We partnered with Kay Annberg, who is a local resident, but also a member of the Foxborough Rotary Club, to do a nature walk at Lane Properties. And then we also had a kickoff event with live animals. That's a snake there with blades from the, mascot from the Bruins. We recently, in March, we actually had a Community Read Speaker Series, a very successful event. We had Abdi Norifdin, who wrote Call Me American. We had him come speak about the, the book that he wrote. He is from Somalia, and he immigrated to America. And so talks about growing up in Somalia, learning English, and then immigrating to the United States. And we had a meet, a meet and greet in the community room. And so he was able to just informally talk to people that wanted to meet him and ask him questions. And then in our magazine room, we cleared out the tables, and we had a great author talk there. Some of the other programs that we've had, I'll just go from top left and across, are, we've had a Bad Art Night for adults. Some of the work did not seem that bad. It seemed actually pretty amazing. We had a magic show during one of the school vacation weeks. The ladies in the middle here was part of a community panel. This was sort of to tie in with our Community Read Speaker Series. We wanted to have a community panel of local residents that have immigrated to the United States, and they talked about their experience. And so they were, they were there for the community panel there. Our Spice Club, I have people send me pictures of what they've actually made. So here's a dish from one of the spices that I gave out for the Spice Club. One of our staff members, Tracy, she did a crafting program in the bottom left over there. We have children's concerts. So I think this is Philip Alexander, wearing the silly hat on his head. Over February vacation, we actually had, had owls come to the library for, for children. And those little hedgehogs there was pop-up art school. We had a teen program. It's a felting art project. And then also, one of our staff members, Jennifer, who's the teen librarian, she's wearing multi-hats, many different hats. She did a floral decorating workshop for us. And that was one of our most popular. I think we had like 45 people on the waitlist, and so we're having to do it again. And it's actually, this week, we're, we're doing another floral decorating. Just a couple other, other programs we wanted to, I wanted to list. Adults, we have book discussion group. I also partner with the COA and do a book discussion group over, over at the Senior Center. I do drop in tech help. We have craft nights, author talks, special lectures, and of course, the Sunday Concert Series. Children's, we have, we have storytime almost every day of the week, which is really, really exciting, a variety to offer the families in the area. Crafting workshops, a Lego, a Lego Club, Strange Science. So like elementary school kids get to do strange science things. I think the last one was they dissected owl pellets or something like that. I'm not, I'm not a science person, but we had pause to read. So kids come in and read to therapy dogs, special performers. Teens, we have Teen Advisory Board. And we find it's really important to ask the teens what they want and how they want their collection in the teen room to be, how they want the room to be, what kind of programs they want. So it's really important for their feedback. D and D, Dungeons and Dragons. We have someone that leads a, leads a group there.
No idea.
I don't know it either, yes. A teen book club and other variety of special programs. Just to wrap up, I thought I would give you guys a picture of next, of this year, coming year, what we're planning. We have a, we're underway on a new strategic plan we have in place that we're hoping to accomplish and roll out by September. And then we're just going to be focusing on expanding outreach to the Foxborough community. We really want to reach residents that don't necessarily think to come to the library, but we really want to have them know all the stuff that I just mentioned tonight, how wonderful the library is, and that it's a really, you know, a community center in Foxborough for all. We want to increase programming and offer the patrons for all ages, increase it even more. And then because the demand is so high, especially since the pandemic, we want to increase digital media and streaming services offered to the patrons. And that's it.
Excellent. You know, I have a granddaughter, she's two years old. And I think my colleagues know I go to Maryland a lot.
Okay.
And now I'm a grandparent. And guess where we go all the time? To the library.
Wonderful.
And there's five of them. And I'm just blown away by how advanced now the libraries are in terms of meeting the needs of communities.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, you know, I come back and look at this, and, you know, this is state of the art. And I invest enormously in Maryland, and this is state of the art. So congratulations on what you're doing here for Foxborough.
Thank you so much.
I don't have a grandchild to bring there, but.
Will they ever visit?
I go myself.
Good, good.
I've tried Canopy. Canopy is, I recommend, unlike a commercial, right? Canopy is really good because there's some esoteric type things there that you don't get on other streaming services. Movies and documentaries, and it's free. So that's good.
And you also forgot to mention the community rooms that you have at the library.
Yes.
I know I've used often in the past, and it seems like it's always, there's always something going on.
There's always something, yeah.
Which is great. We are not that, I probably seen that part, but where is the teen center in the, in the library? Is that up on the third floor, or?
It's up on the, it's up on the first floor, which actually confused me when I first started at the library, because the ground floor, the first floor, the second floor. And I never understood why people were referring to it.
I'm now confused, too.
I'm sorry. Technically, it's the second floor. Past the reference desk where the computers are.
Oh, and it's in the back hall? Because I go once or twice a week. I'll go take a peek.
Oh, yeah, it's wonderful. Trial the beanbag chair.
Anyone else make comments?
I just, really quickly, well, not obviously, but I'm a huge fan of the library. We always talk about at my house, my kids pretty literally grew up there. It helps that I live about 20 yards away, and my wife also works there, full disclosure. So, you know, I'm just really happy and proud of the work that you do over there for the community. And so that said, I just had a quick question. And this is maybe sort of forward-thinking and maybe a little out there. But you mentioned 127,000 physical books and whatnot, and then 31,000 digital units, I'll call them?
Yes.
So where do you see that going, like in the 10, 15, 20 years in the future? Are you seeing maybe less of the paper and more digital? And what does that look like? And what does that look like to you?
Yeah, I think that, I, I, I think that the digital is definitely going to increase even more than what we have seen for 2022. And I think that the physical will go down. But there's just something to be said. I think everyone, there's something to be said about actually still holding a book. So I don't think that that will ever really go away. And I think that, you know, we'll always continue to be buying books for the collection, but but possibly steering more towards the digital formats. Yeah, yeah.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thanks, Libby.
Okay. Now we have Town Clerk Bob Cutler to give us an update on the Town Clerk's Office and Elections.
How's everybody doing?
Good, Bob. How are you?
Good.
Good.
So before we get into that, I wanted to update you all on the Do Not Solicit canvasser bylaw. It was passed last year, last town meeting in May. And we're finally up and running. So Chief Grace sent out a Facebook blast yesterday. And just as a result of that, we've already received about five hundred people who have signed up for that do not solicit list. So they can find the contact information on that Facebook post. And if they, if anybody's interested and can't find it, then they can always contact our office and we'll set them up with it, so.
Great.
It's been a long time coming. I know Leah's been really interested in seeing it get off the ground. But with, you know, with the help of Aaron and Aaron Hyer and Chief Grace and Mr. Cordier comes in, it's one weekend, it's up and running, so.
I'm using, I'm using the magic dust for the first. Everybody wants to be helpful, so I'll take advantage of that.
Yeah. So typically in the Town Clerk's Office, our year starts January, you know, a calendar year, and we get off with census and dog licensing. And then we start preparing in January for the annual town election. We have the nomination period and all of that. And that runs through March. And at the end of March, we have our list of candidates and we get the ballot prepared. And then we start any absentee voting and all of that. And, you know, this year, the election's on May first. And unfortunately, we have a slate of candidates, but no contested races. But it was actually kind of funny how it evolved. There was a possibility of two potential races with three candidates for one spot in each. And they all talked to each other and didn't want to have to hold signs or whatever their reasons, they decided, okay, I'm happy to have that person go forward. And we ended up with no races, so. And as you know, right after the election, we have the town meeting on May eighth. So we've been getting ready for all of that. You remember, we came to you in January and asked that we not do early voting for this period. And as it turns out, we, I think we've had five absentee ballot requests. So it was kind of prophetic, I think. But, you know, so there's something for us to think about next year for the town election as well. We'll come before you again and talk about that. And your group can decide whether or not you want to have early voting for next year. I know Leah wanted to just take it a year-at-a-time approach, and I think that makes sense. But, so, you know, the last couple of weeks, we've been gearing up for the election. We, you know, tested our new equipment last week. We had a handful of people show up to see the new equipment and see how it operated. I think everyone's going to be happy with how that works out.
Great, that's good.
And I was very happy that we were trying them out on a annual town election, which is typically quieter. So we get to work out any kinks in the system. But very excited to see how they operate on Monday. The election opens at seven, and it runs to eight, eight P. M. So not anticipating a huge turnout, but if people want to see the new equipment, they should come out and, but they should come out and vote anyways. We've had this discussion before. We had our meeting today for the town meeting with Frank Spillane, myself, and the finance team and John, and went through any of the issues that we might expect for that. So I think we're in good shape for that meeting. Don't anticipate any of the huge issues. I know some of the citizen petitions may generate some interest in discussion. But other than that, I think most of the issues are pretty straightforward. There's a lot of cleanup items for the zoning articles. And, you know, obviously, the budget, that that takes up a bit of time at the beginning of the meeting. But tech, you know, typically, we don't have a lot of concern, meant a lot of work put into it by the finance team, the advisory committee, your committee. And and people usually are satisfied with the information that's presented, so. After that, this year is an off-election year. So typically, in the summer, we get into, do projects that, you know, need to be cleaned up, document management, things like that. We have certain books that we have to update, update the minutes from town meetings, update the results of elections, those kind of things. And that's what we do in the off-season. Next year is going to be completely different. We're going to have four elections, starting with the presidential primary in March. Then we'll have the annual town election in May, the primary in September, and then the presidential election. So it's, it's going to be mostly election stuff all next year. But that's why I wanted to get this new equipment up and running this spring. In an off-year, typically, we'll, we'll start, we get a lot of initiative petitions. That starts the process for those ballot questions that come up in the November elections. So that that process starts this spring. So we have to certify signatures. So there's a lot of time that we, the three of us, spend certifying signatures for those. And then there'll be another round next year in anticipation of the September, I mean, the November election. Typically, we end up with anywhere between three and five questions on the ballot. But there may be eight to ten sets of initiative petitions that we get. So we're getting stacks of those that come in, and we certify those and send them back to the state. In the fall, we're usually preparing, you know, for the census in January, cleaning up other items so that we start the new year fresh, ready to go. Guys, have any general questions or?
I was going to ask you about the new equipment, so you answered that, so. Any other questions?
No, no. Looking forward to seeing them on Monday, myself.
Yeah, they look a lot different. You know, they've got a big screen in front. And when a voter goes in and submits the ballot, if there's an issue, if they've overvoted in a race or if they're, if it's blank, it'll kick back and it'll tell them exactly why it was kicked back. Doesn't give any personal information, just, you know, you overvoted in the selectmen race, so then you give an opportunity to redo the ballot or you can submit it as is. So that's different because they can, it's a screen about this big, and they can actually, you know, read it themselves, which is what we want anyways. The old ones, the screen was about that big, and you had to know where it was to look for it. And this one, you'll know right away. So very excited about it.
Good, awesome, great.
So. Anything else?
Oh, good.
Any questions about town meeting or?
Not yet. Pretty good that way, too.
Okay.
We're ready.
All right, excellent.
Appreciate everything you do for us.
We'll see you on Monday.
See you Monday.
See you Monday.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
See you guys.
Okay, now we have some people from the Historical Commission at the POW MIA flagpole installation.
John, how you doing? Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Mark Forensic, 11 Union Street, and I'm the chairman of the Historical Commission. So as I think you all know, we just finished up a project to put the the new town square signs in place. And those are the twenty-nine markers for the twenty-eight men and one woman who were killed between World War I, II, Korea, and Vietnam. So we had a fun drive. We exceeded our numbers with some nice help from the Partners in Patriotism and the VFW, pretty good checks. We were able to get them all, and they're all in place now, so well before Memorial Day. So that's a good project to be done.
And they look great.
Thank you.
They look great.
Had a lot of good, they really pop out compared to the old ones.
Been great feedback. Terrific job.
You really see them, they really stand out. So John Gitani here was actually somewhat instrumental in getting the signs because he's done yeoman's work through the years in maintaining them, painting them and trying to straighten out when hit by cars and storm damage. And he's done a lot of work over the years, but it really was just getting to be a losing effort. I mean, some of the original World War I signs are literally a hundred years old, so nineteen twenty-three, so. John was pushing us to do something different, and we appreciate that. And now that we've got them in place, he would like to do something else.
Well, let's say twenty years ago now. It all started with Arthur Brown Memorial Square on the corner of Beech and Mechanic. That's where it started with Mr. Cal Cushe. And, and it, and it grew from there. Went through the whole town after Mr. Arthur Letts stopped by one Sunday morning. And I, I knew who he was, but I never really knew him. And that's how I got to know Jack. And he wanted to go public with this, and, and we did. And we, he came up with an idea of adopt, adopt a square program where people in the neighborhood would landscape the, the area around the memorial squares. And every one of them was adopted. Really took off well. But like Mark was just saying, between age and weather and, you know, cars hitting them and whatever, branches, it was time. And the memorial squares wouldn't hold any paint anymore. And so Mark and the Historical Commission put this program together to come up with the funds and replace them all. And one of the reasons was to really expose those names so the next generation and the generation after that don't forget what these men and women did. And so what I would like to ask tonight is, on the corner of Beech and Mechanic, it's a, I'm going to say it's a very, not popular, but a very outstanding area for people coming into town, especially in gang days, concerts.
Pretty prominent that.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Well-traveled.
Yes.
Yeah.
So with the name there, Arthur's name there, I, I would like to maybe put like a little, a flagpole up next to Arthur's memorial. Maybe like a twelve or fourteen-foot flagpole with the American flag and the POW flag. And if it would be okay, too, I was also thinking maybe getting one of those solar lights and pointing it up at the flag and the memorial square and light it up at night and have it shone day and night. I'm willing to foot the bill on the project. A buddy of mine said he helped me do it. You know, it's not a, not a big project. You know, we could do it easily in a day. And, you know, I don't want to make it a, a big thing, but maybe when we put the flag up, if you grant us permission, you know, maybe we could have just like a, a little, little ceremony there. Maybe have a trumpet player from the high school band come in, you know, play National Anthem or something or God Bless America. And, you know, whoever wanted to show up, just come for a half an hour and make a flag, flagpole presentation to all the names throughout the town. And that's for me and Mark here to ask you for permission to do it. I'd like to do it before Memorial Day if that could be done.
I don't foresee any problem. I mean, once we approve it, you said it'd take less than a day to.
Yeah.
Put it up.
Get your stuff to, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Do it fast.
Yeah.
Are you still accepting donations for?
We have over the, but we needed, so it's really our moot point.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I mean, we did the same thing, didn't we, on Coacasset Street and Mill Street when we redid that area down there? Didn't we have a little presentation, too?
I don't, honestly, I think that might have been before my time.
Okay. But yeah, I think that's a great idea and get a few people down there and.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Great idea, great location.
Yeah.
I saw there's a little flag there already.
Yes, we have a little, little wave of flags there, POW, you know.
Dawn's honor.
To get it started a little bit, you know.
I said that can't be the flag.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, yeah, something I'd like to do and Mark would like to do and Jack and, you know.
Lot of people.
Lot of people.
Good. It's a great thing you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Keefe, thank you.
I think we're ready to.
Yeah, let's vote them. Vote on the motion.
As far as any lighting, I feel like that would be innocuous enough that there would be not infringe on neighbors.
Yeah, we're talking like a little.
Yeah.
Pointing up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already have, at the six town-owned cemeteries, we have them on the signs already. So, I mean, they, they hit the sign and not much more.
Okay. If the football traffic doesn't, doesn't bother them, then not much else will.
Yeah, yeah. Keeping the lens.
After the forty nip bottles I picked up Saturday. We having another cleanup day in Foxborough this year?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think we've switched it to September now, though.
September now?
Yeah, September.
Seems like the littering people like Fireball.
That's exactly what I picked up, forty of them. Just in that island alone, the body line. Never mind on the corner.
Put a barrel there.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, we're ready for the motion?
Motion to approve the installation of a new flagpole at the corner of Beech Street and Mechanic Street on Arthur Brown Corner, contingent on approval of a poll placement by DPW Director Chris Gallagher.
Second. Fellows in favor?
Aye. Great, done.
Great.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Thank you. I got one more question. Is it possible to ask Mr. Gallagher to maybe trim a few branches for me to the right side of the square? Is that possible?
Through the chair, if I may. My, my comment was going to be that Chris is offered to help in any way that he can. So if you just reach out to him, he just, he said anything you guys need, just to, just to let him know.
That's Chris for you.
Yeah. Second thing is if you let the other Chris, Christina, know when you do, if you do have a little ceremony, if you let her know, she'll make sure that all these folks know. But also, she does a great job of getting the message out to the community.
That'd be great.
So if you're looking for a little, to get some critical mass of folks down there, she can help us do that, so.
That'd be great.
And she always brings her camera.
Ah, that'd be nice, Christina. Yep, yep. Already welcome.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good. Okay, John, we have Town Manager's Update.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First, I just want to just comment on just what a great welcome I've had in the town. I'm rolling up on just over two weeks now. And I've met most department heads, a lot of the staff, several boards and committees. And like Libby said, I'd, I'd already met with Libby for, you know, well over an hour just to talk about the library. And then she says, oh, we've got this ribbon cutting. I'm like, great, just let me know. And Christine and I went over there, she took all the pictures. And I've just been telling people, if there's anything going on in the community, let me know, and if I can make it, I will, I will be there. But everybody's been just extremely welcoming and positive staff. You know, I was going to comment, you know, when Libby was making her presentation, you know, you can pay people to work, you can't pay them to care and to be passionate about what they do. And what I'm finding as I meet with the staff through the town is that they're passionate about what they do and they care. And that says a lot about the culture of the community and it comes through in those connections, so. But continuing to make my way around, I've been meeting with most people. I'm hoping towards the end of this week to physically get out and visit sites more. So that's what I'm trying to get out and about and look around. But still scheduled to the hilt, just in terms of meeting everybody. As Town Clerk Bob mentioned earlier, you know, we sat down with the moderator and him and the finance team going through the warrant. So things seem to be in good shape. But just, again, just a great transition, says a lot about this community, the professionalism and the completeness of this transition. It's the best scenario that a manager can ask for. So it just reinforces, for me, it made a good choice coming here. And I hope you feel, as we get further along, it was the right choice for you folks, too. Just a couple of things to just bring up. The Foxborough High School Boy Soccer Team is going to have a car wash at Town Hall Parking Lot on May 7th, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Boy Scout Troop 32 is going to do a Mother's Day flower pickup again in the Town Hall Parking Lot. That's on May 13th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And then on May 3rd, we'll be meeting in this room. Myself and key staff will be having the pre-town meeting review or the annual town meeting warrant review. So that will be broadcast, walk through the warrant, brief presentations, and hopefully allow people to ask any questions that they might have so they don't feel like they need to ask them at town meeting, although they can. But that will take place on May 3rd at 12:30 p.m. in the gala room here. And then last but not least, I just want to mention that the copies of the warrant booklet are available online, but also available at the library, Town Hall, and Council on Aging. So if folks want a physical copy of the warrant, they can pick it up. If you just want to peruse it online, it's available on the Town Clerk. Actually, it's available on the homepage as well. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
So the warrant review, that's televised, but it's not a Zoom type?
No, it's not a hybrid meeting. It's just, so yes, people would have to physically come here to walk through the warrant. But the discussion and the presentation will be televised.
Okay, good. Thank you. Great. Okay. Selectmen's update under new business. Bob already said this town election's May 1st, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Ahern Middle School and the annual town meeting, May 8th, 7:30 p.m. at Foxborough High School. The other thing is the board and committee appointments and reappointments will happen in May. So, you know, people that might be interested in a position on a board or a committee or they want to, might want to be reappointed, just to be aware of that and to really, you know, prepare yourself to make your wishes known in advance of those meetings. Anything further on that, Christina?
Yeah, just, I'll be sending out information to people who are being reappointed and the board and committee chairs for letting them know who's up for reappointment. And if they want to, if they have any people who are interested in any boards or commissions that have open seats. I know that the Conservation Commission does have an open seat that will be available. So if anybody's interested, please submit a board and committee request, request for appointment form to our office. It's found online under the Boards and Committees page. And we'll get that to the chair and see what we can do to get you on a new committee.
I know the advisory committee is always looking for. Great, okay, on to action items. Oh, business, any old business to?
Old business this evening. So Dennis, the only thing I was going to mention is that I've asked for a time for this board to discuss. This board has the licensing authority for the town to discuss potentially pulling together some policies and procedures and some kind of documentation for a process for licensing, particularly for new licenses and renewals as well. But just so that we have some kind of documentation and, you know, speaking to roles and responsibilities, including what our role and responsibilities are. So just, that could be a short discussion if we feel like we're in a good place. I just want to make sure I understand it and if we need to sort of flesh that out a little bit to have that in an open session with this board.
So maybe at a future meeting as an agenda item?
I think so, yeah.
Great, good. Thank you. Okay, action items. We're going to start with Bar Louie, review and vote to approve a change of officers. Is anyone here from Bar Louie?
No, we've got, these are just going to be straight, these are relatively straightforward housekeeping matters. So the applications have been reviewed for completeness, they'll be sent off to the ABCC. I think that, I don't believe there's anybody that is here because we didn't schedule them as a hearing. We just, in talking with Leah, we moved them forward as just action items.
Yeah, I remember the conversation. I didn't know if there were any changes. So then we're ready to vote on these as we go through the list.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Bar Louie.
All right. Motion to approve the change of officers for BLH Acquisition Company, LLC, doing businesses, Bar Louie, to Brian Wright, CEO, Michael Merlich, COO, and Megan Gibbons, Secretary.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, next, Fat Tuesday.
Motion to approve a change of manager for 1919 Octane Patriot Place LLC, doing business as Fat Tuesday, from Lawrence W. Brown Jr. to Alexander Granier de Macedo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Next is the 99 Restaurant Review.
Motion to approve the change of officers for the 99 Restaurant located at 4 Fisher Street to appoint Clinton Lotenschlager, Marjorie Nemzora, Philip Purcell, Mark Spurgeon, and Kara Jacobs as LLC managers and to remove Wendy Harkness, Charles Noyes, and Kurt Schnaubelt as Secretary, President, and CFO, respectively.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have recreation donation.
Motion to accept a $10,000 anonymous donation for recreation programs and services and $150 for the fishing derby from the Mass Marine Trades Educational Trust.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Cultural Council.
Motion to accept donations to the Foxborough Cultural Council totaling $4,755.91 for the Fox in the Borough from Mayfair Realty and Development, $3,000 from Tiffany Elliott, $1,500, David Backrack, $150, and Roger and Cynthia Rumsey, $1,500.
Okay, so Tiffany Elliott should be 105.91, I think you said 1500.
No, in here it says 150, but yeah.
No, I know, but actually on the documentation, it's 105.
As amended by Dennis.
Well, I tried to get it before the second. So want me to reread that or? So the only changes.
Just as amended, it's fine.
As amended, okay. 105.91 for Tiffany Elliott.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, good. Okay, Veterans Services.
Motion to accept a $587.84 donation for veterans' service in honor of Jeannie E. Dow.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Police.
Motion to accept a $200 donation to the K-9 Fund from the Hockamok Kennel Club Incorporated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the approval of the select board meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the select board meeting minutes for March 14th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other business before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.